Okay, I'd like to call to order the work session for the City Council for the city of Wildwood for Monday, September 9, 2019. Ms. Stremmeler, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Boe.
Present.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remy.
Present.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Bros.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano.
Present.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Gregg Noddy.
Here.
Okay, thank you. For those of you in the audience, thank you for being here this evening. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device that is on, if you would please turn it to silent, we would appreciate that. No mayor comments or announcements. Under information, we have seven items and we have no action items this evening. So is there anything under information that any member of the council would like to discuss or question? Councilmember Stevens?
Hey, Joe, I had a question on the Center Avenue. Just noticed the sentence where it said the meeting was well-attended and contentious at times. What was the hang-up or was there any, what were the issues that were being hashed out?
Several of the original owners of property on Center Avenue attended and they took the opportunity, rightly so, to call into question the construction habits of Wayland Custom Homes. And so there was just a lot of discussion back and forth between the way Mr. Wayland's kept the properties that he's been developing, their appearance, the lack of siltation control at times, and just their frustration.
Okay, and I had another resident who lives around the corner that did mention something very similar to that about the, I don't know, the silt fencing and the stuff coming out onto the sidewalk. Has that been addressed through code enforcement or?
We've done our best. There was a discussion at that meeting that's referenced in the letter about just how responsive the city has been. And I can assure you, when we get complaints, we do go to the site, we address it with the construction superintendent. Problem is, is that it seems to just keep reoccurring at times. And part of it is just the storm events themselves kind of overwhelm whatever we do require to be installed. But part of it is just Mr. Wayland needing to do a little better job.
Councilmember McKeon?
Joe, this is for you too. On the Wildwood celebration, the summary, I know that we postponed something for the barbecue bash. Was that relating to the energy company, the Green2Go Electricians? I know that we had some problems with the celebration. Did we work that out or what was that complication?
Actually, Green2Go did a great job for us at the celebration. They were a little slow getting there on Friday when we were doing the inspections with St. Louis County of the bounce houses and other items. Ultimately led to one of the trapeze artists, one of the acts, so to speak, not being able to participate on Saturday because of the inspection process. But all in all, we felt very good about what Green2Go brought to the celebrate Wildwood event. The item on tonight's agenda, regular agenda, is for the barbecue bash.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yeah, Joe, for you again, or maybe Rick, or maybe even Sam, I'm not, maybe all three can gang up on me, but I want to kind of come in the back door on this relocation standstill agreement with American Water. And the back door is, you know, an agreement with American Water is fine, but can you give me a little bit of background on the last incident we had with them and the exploding water mains over at Dartmouth and other places? And have we had much cooperation from them in terms of either remuneration to those homeowners or fixing those major problems?
I'm not sure that I'm probably the best to answer that question, quite frankly, because I've not been involved in that discussion at all. I don't know if anybody else would want to take it. I know, Joe, you've had some discussions with them.
Yeah, yes, I did have a conversation with the engineering manager of American Water. I actually just sent him an email today with the five locations in Wildwood, and he said he was going to look into it. And at this point right now, that's the update I have.
Who is that from, Joe?
Who is?
Who are you in contact with?
Derek Lyman, he is the engineering manager based out of the office in Griefport. I also spoke with the president of American Water.
Good, thank you. I just commented, maybe we can use our leverage here of signing this agreement to kind of push them along also and say, hey, this other issue is also quite important to us.
So the other issue I would mention, or other item, I guess, possibility relative to that would be if there is any sort of issue with them not assisting our residents or dragging their heels, we could always invite them to attend the next council meeting to have a discussion about that. Councilmember Garitano?
I'll add too, I shared with them the work that we're doing with the erosion task force, and they're very interested in knowing more about it and even participating. So I did speak with Councilmember Remy today about it, and he's going to get in touch with them so that he can invite them to an upcoming meeting. Because they also have infrastructure that runs along Cawkes Creek that they have also experienced erosion around there. And in fact, there's a pipe that's fully exposed in Cawkes Creek right now that American Water did confirm that is their pipe. And they are implementing like a temporary valve should the pipe break, and then I'm going to try to reinforce it. So that's over in Thunderhead Canyon and Westland Farms.
So we just ask whether it's Councilmember Bertolino, Garitano, or City Administrator Sam Anslum, if you could just let us know, or Rick, between now and the next meeting, if there's any need to put that on the agenda, we can do that. Okay, anything else? I had a couple of things, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jordan?
Joe, I have a question for you. I noticed that there was an email that went out that, or actually, on the, first on the mayor's meeting notes, that there was a meeting with CTC regarding rural internet. There was a meeting of at least some members of the Rural Internet Committee. Is that a meeting that you were present at?
Yes, ma'am, the meeting was held last Thursday.
Last Thursday? Can you tell me what was discussed at the meeting? Was CTC on the phone?
Yes, we had two representatives from the consultant on the telephone as part of a conference call. We also had a couple of the members of the Rural Internet Access Committee participate. I think there was two major goals associated with the telephone call. First was to understand the funding of the approaches that might be most suitable to address our rural internet access issue. And then secondly, any interim steps that can be taken. Because I think the prevailing thought is now that if we select one of the approaches identified by CTC, the consultant, it's going to take a bit of time to implement. It's not going to be in a month or two. In fact, it could be a year or more. And so what do we do when we receive calls from residents that are still seeking a solution and we don't want to necessarily tell them, you've got another year or two to wait?
Okay, and this was the second meeting that was done with CTC, right, following our, what, June 6th was the last time the committee met, right? Or June 5th?
Yes, ma'am, we've had two conference calls with the consultant.
And the meeting with some of the attendees?
Yes.
And I actually, the first meeting, when I heard about it from another member of the committee, I actually reached out to you and asked if I could attend, is the council liaison, if I could attend the meeting with the consultant? And I believe you checked on that for me, right?
Yes, ma'am, the mayor had arranged the meeting and requested the attendees, so I just wanted to clear it through the mayor.
Sure, sure. And was, so my attending this last meeting is the council liaison was not an option either?
He did not ask that you be in attendance.
So I'm just curious, is that like normal that you see with the committees where there's? Well, I just, I'll take that question back. I would like to ask the mayor, you know, I previously, after the last meeting, I asked quite politely that as the council liaison, that I'd be allowed to attend the meeting with the consultant. And I'm a little concerned that this is now the second meeting in a row that I've missed having conversation with the consultant on what is, not even arguably, what is the number one most important issue in Ward 6, which is lack of internet within homes. And I've, for years now, I've been on the committee and I've seen the residents come forward that don't have internet or have just the most minimal internet and they don't, I mean, their life is just a mess. They can't work from home, their kids can't do their homework, they are concerned about the ability to sell their house, et cetera. And it's obviously something that's important to me and the ward, and I'm concerned that I was once again excluded from that. Why are you excluding me?
So I guess I disagree with your assumption that I'm intentionally excluding you. I would start with it, Councilmember Jordan, from this perspective. Just as you or any member of the council is entitled to have meetings that you want to have and answer emails, engage in phone conversations, I'm also entitled to do that.
Right, and you said that last time, and I said I totally agree with that, right?
Councilmember Jordan, I have the floor, I'm trying to answer your question.
Sure, go for it.
So I guess the issue would be if you want to, in general, go down the road of when I have meetings, you being included in them, I mean, do I need to copy you on every email that I have relative to the topic? Do I need to patch you in on calls that I have relative to that? All that being said, with that background in mind, I'm happy to involve you when the time comes when that would be helpful. These meetings are frankly about getting me to a point where I'm up to date relative to things that I believe largely have already been discussed with the Rural Internet Access Committee. I appreciate your, I appreciate your interest in it. And again, when I think it would be helpful to do that, I will definitely involve you in it.
I think that, just to continue on with my situation there, I still don't understand why you would exclude me from what is discussions about publicly funded research for the number one important thing to the Rural Internet Committee that I'm the liaison of and to Ward 6, of which I'm the council member of. And I wonder, you know, why are we not having these meetings in public? What is the reason to do it privately? I mean, my definition of government is that we need to, the residents are paying for that survey and they're paying for, you know, the results of getting advice to consult. And it just, it alarms me that twice in a row, there's been a meeting with the consultant that I, and it's not a matter of you left me out. I asked Joe to ask you if I could go to that meeting and you told him, no, I could not. And so again, I asked, why are you intentionally excluding me from these meetings? Is there something that I've done that you disagree, or you disagree with my approach to rural internet that's leading you to have these meetings behind private doors instead of in public with me in present?
Councilmember Bertolino?
Does that mean that I'm done and you're no longer answering the question?
I actually already answered it. Councilmember Bertolino?
That's really polite.
Maybe to Joe, curiosity question really, there was an editorial in the Post Dispatch last week from, I think her name was Catherine Chamberlain. Did anyone see that? Anyone else see that? Did I get a different paper than everybody else?
What was that name?
It was about rural internet access. Did you see that?
I did not.
I'd like to direct you, Joe, or whoever, to talk to our PR firm, maybe, and Sam, maybe as well, and resurrect that article. If people in Ward 6 and Ward 1 read the article, the first thing that jumps out is that, you know, the suppliers have been given millions of dollars by the federal government to supply rural internet access, and why am I not getting it? I think, if I was sitting out there, that would be my response to it. But I don't know how much of the article was factual, okay, or not, and did she? It was an editorial. It was on the editorial page, right-hand side editorial page. And I'm pretty sure the author was a Caitlin Chamberlain, I'm pretty sure that was. And would you mind looking into that and see if there's, two things, one, is it factual from what she stated? Number two, is that open a door for us maybe, and I don't know if it's positive or negative, PR-wise, can we dovetail on that to get a message out to the communities about what we are doing in rural internet access, and maybe some of the roadblocks that we're hitting, as John's pointed out, is that we're not considered rural, kind of thing, but we have hundreds of people who can't get high-speed internet. But just a thought, if you wouldn't mind checking it out, I'd appreciate it.
We certainly will, and then I'll circulate it around via email to City Council, the Rural Internet Access Committee members and any others that are on my kind of email blast list regarding this particular topic.
Councilmember Dillard?
Joe, with this meeting, a phone call that Councilmember Jordan references, and I apologize if I missed this the first time around, who all was in attendance on that call?
There were two representatives from CTC Technology, the consultant, Tom Asch is the primary, and he did most if not all of the talking for the consultant, Scott Jackson, a member of the Rural Internet Access Committee, Sam Anslum, our city administrator, Mayor Boland, Rick Kalus, the chair of the Rural Internet Access Committee, and myself.
So two other members of the Rural Internet Access Committee were on the call?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I mean, here's my concern, and I understand what Councilmember Jordan is saying, this is not, and I understand what the mayor's trying to do, he's trying to marginalize the concern, which I think is wrong. He's trying to-
According to rules, Councilmember Dillard, please don't impugn the motives of anyone at the bench. We've had that discussion before, go ahead.
I'm not impugning the motives, I'm just simply stating-
You can't attribute, Councilmember Dillard, you can't attribute, imputing motives means attributing to people their motives, a definition or intent for doing things, and I think we all heard you say that.
I didn't say why you did it, I said what I thought you did was wrong.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That's not a motive, that's an end result. I think we all know why you did it. But here's the issue, though, you try to, you try to castigate this, you try to cast this issue as saying, oh, it's like any other email or phone call that you make privately. This is very different than that. This is a meeting of two members of the Rural Internet Access Committee, three members from the city staff, including you, I'm sorry, the mayor, two members of the city staff, and then two members of the consulting firm. Here's why this is, here's why this bothers me. We do a lot of talking and hand-wringing up here in this last election about functionality of government, about getting things and working together and being civil, and you have the council liaison to the Rural Internet Access Committee, which is a huge issue in Ward 6 and parts of Ward 1. We heard Mr. Leslie appear to speak very articulately two weeks ago about the need for rural internet access. It seems to me that excluding Ms. Jordan from any conversations with the consultants, especially when it's not just a phone call or email that you're not copying her on, it's actually business of the committee, is actually stopping the functionality of government and slowing things down. It's not civil, it's not even professional. It doesn't make any sense to me why the council liaison would be excluded from these kind of discussions. It just, it's, to me, it's unprofessional, it is slowing down the progress to get the rural internet access, and it's impeding the functionality of our government. I just, it's, it baffles me, I don't know why you would do that.
Councilmember McKeon?
So I just wanted to kind of comment on what was going on. Is there a way that maybe, if, I understand that you can do that, I guess the confusion is, is I think that the ultimate thing is we just want to understand what went on. Can you provide like a summary of what your meeting was about?
So if we're going to do that, that's going to apply to everyone. We all have meetings, all of us, with people from different committees, other council members, constituents. So if I'm, I have no problem with a policy like that, but the policy would not be just applicable to the mayor.
That's fine, I was just trying to understand, like to remove the duplicate, trying to hunt down information, trying to understand, because we're sitting up here, I'm not in that committee, but I think that just being the transparency that we're all trying to fight for up here, I think it would just be helpful. So if you're saying that, maybe it's something that we all need to think about. So I'm not asking to move for it, I just wanted to say, what's that option?
So the report that missed-
Just for transparency.
And I appreciate that. The report, the mayor's report that I do every Friday that Councilmember Jordan referenced, as you know, I'm assuming, it includes dates that I have meetings, who's present, and then in the last column, what was done at that meeting. To Councilmember Jordan or anyone else at this bench, if you ever have a question about any of my meetings, you are more than willing to call me. I did not get a call from Councilmember Jordan, this is the first instance I've heard of her concern about that particular meeting.
Okay.
Phones always open.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gregg Noddy?
Yeah, I don't really have time to get into this debate about who got invited to where or when. I'm familiar with behavioral processes that go on around here, but I have a much more important issue. Mr. Bertolino brought up a good point, he mentioned the business about the rural internet and that we're not considered rural, and if somebody tells me that one more time, I'm going to deck them, okay? You know, Wards 1 and 6 are rural, I'm afraid, and they don't want to give us any money. There was a substantial amount of money, I have been in contact with Bruce DeGroot's representative, his legislative assistant, Mr. Bradbury, they assured me that the state was given a large component of money from the federal government to cover rural internet, but we never got one red nickel of that. I think that's unfair, I think it's inappropriate. I've written to the Lieutenant Governor, I've talked to Mr. DeGroot, I've talked to the 110th District Representative, I've talked to everybody I can talk to, and I'm running out of people to talk to. What I need from this body, and what I need from as many people out there in the audience as I can get, is you folks have got to help me to get to the people at the state level to get them to release funds to us to use for our rural areas of Wildwood. That money should come to us as well as to anybody else. We need it desperately, we're in a desperate situation in Wards 1 and 6, and I've heard Mr. Leslie many times, he did an excellent job at the last council meeting, I've heard other people discuss the same things that he's discussed over and over again. I would desperately like to see this problem resolved. And I think the only way we can actually get it resolved in its entirety is to get a chunk of that change. And if it takes a resolution, arduance, I don't care, whatever it takes, petitions to get this, get their attention, then I'm in favor of doing whatever we have to do. Mr. Vunich, and I won't talk about it because it's in process, but we have a process going on right now with a group along Rieger Road, a substantial group of people who are probably going to wind up funding themselves to some extent, which is probably one way to do it. But it's ridiculous for them to have to do this when there's money available for rural internet services, and they've set up co-ops all over the state of Missouri, we've seen that, there's been published articles about it. I don't understand why we can't do a similar thing and get the money to support that. So I'm asking all of you, I'm begging all of you, please help me to get to these people at the state level, to tell them they've got to give us the money to release it to our rural districts here in Wildwood. Appreciate your listening.
Councilmember Werther?
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. I know over the years, a number of times, we've made applications for grants, loans, whatever we can possibly get. And we always get the, we're not so rural, response. And to Councilmember Dr. Gregg Noddy's comment, can you go back through what, the typical reason why Wildwood doesn't qualify for this, so that everyone understands?
Well, just as a point of background, there's been two major funding initiatives by both the federal and state governments. One was part of the Great Recession, approximately 2007, 2008. We availed ourselves to anyone that would listen during that period of time. We actually went to the Capitol, talked with a group that was administering the funds associated with rural internet access. They were very sympathetic, they spoke about, yes, you really do have a problem, but we don't have a solution because you're not rural. Thereafter, this most recent funding initiative that's been led by the Trump administration, one of our providers, Whisper ISP, was a recipient of almost $100 million toward the effort, none of which is being planned to be spent in Wildwood because, again, we're not classified as a rural area. They are looking at locations in Franklin County, but not St. Louis County or the city of Wildwood. Guess what I would say is, if we have left a stone unturned, I would not know. We've met at times with the two United States senators, the representatives, we've met with representatives from the US House of Representatives, we've met with local state senators, representatives, we've talked with St. Louis County, we've applied for grants when Google was looking to install its first fiber system. It's not that there hasn't been an effort, but each time we seem to come up against two impediments. One, the area's not defined rural, and two, even if the city is willing to kind of prime the engine, no one has yet agreed to let us somehow recoup some of those costs. So as we can put public money, not necessarily toward a private entity or initiative, and so we'll keep trying.
Yeah, and I think there was one notable item that perhaps we both skipped over, and that's with regards to Charter. At one time, there was, we were close to pulling the trigger on an agreement with Charter, which I think the city would have funded about $3 to $3.5 million.
At the end of the negotiation, at the end of the negotiation process, it was almost $6 million.
$6 million. And in the end, who would have owned all that infrastructure the city would have paid for?
At that time, Charter, now called Spectrum.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jordan?
So, Joe, Councilmember Werther kind of touched upon what I was going to ask you to speak about, but I think that to kind of go a step further than speaking about it here, I do believe that you're correct, that that is a common thought that people have, that all this, you know, these millions and millions are available, in fact, Whisper ISP, who is the ISP that covers the, most of the Ward 1 area, they were the recipient of, I don't know, was it $6 million, or it was a large amount of money?
It was a very large amount of money.
But they couldn't use it in our area because of these restrictions, and that was part of what this consultant was to do, was look at opportunities there, and even with the education, and all the various steps that they took, they were, again, stuck by the type of community that we are. But I feel like that would be something that would be very good to get into the paper, to get into our website, et cetera, to kind of outline what those challenges are, and again, what we're doing. And I think that it's really important because there are so many people in Wildwood who have a wonderful city to live in, and yet they suffer on what's the most basic and most highly demanded amenity in housing, which is fast internet and cellular reception, and areas that are challenged for one are challenged for the other most often, that I think any information that we can put out there is important. Can we, I think, as you said, June 5th was the last meeting, can we schedule a meeting of the committee to convene here in the near future? I think it would be helpful, and we could talk about how that information could be made public, and the findings and discussions with CTC.
Chair Kalus and I spoke about just that subject on Thursday. He and I both thought it was appropriate to kind of- He and I both thought it was appropriate to kind of bring the group, the committee, together, update them, and then get some important details out about at least Bayz ET's fiber optic project in Hawks Rest and some other things that individual subdivisions are doing, and see how that all fits into the equation.
I think that would be great. And then I wanted to follow up to what the mayor mentioned in a couple items. Number one, I, yes, I did not ask you directly, but I asked Joe to ask you, and he did, and the answer was no. So you were specifically asked if I could attend, and the answer was no. And secondly, this last meeting, you don't, your mayor's items don't say in advance, at least knowledge to me, when those meetings are. So I will, again, at the council level, respectfully request that is, any meetings that you have with CTC, that number one, you consider doing it publicly so the residents of Wildwood see that what we're trying to do to meet the needs that exist in our community are being done. And two, that you allow me, as the council liaison and representative Ward Six, to be present and part of that process. There was a landslide electing me into office, and I do not believe for a second it was for Cheryl Jordan. I believe it's because I said I would do my best to work on rural internet access. And I know that you like to say that I'm an obstructionist. It's all over your website. But I respectfully suggest to you that keeping me from these meetings is the obstructionist to the needs of Ward Six. Thank you.
Councilor Brost. Actually, before I do that, relative to the comment from council member Jordan about promulgating information to our residents on this issue about the impediments that we are facing, that council member Gregg Notte and council member Werther have mentioned, and they are impediments, given that the Rural Internet Access Committee will be meeting soon, and I think that we'll likely, given where we are, have, they've had the ability to crystallize around what will likely be a firm recommendation, I would suggest that we wait before we push out any information until the committee has met, because hopefully something positive will come out and we can put that out all together, rather than just negative information. Councilmember Brost. Councilor Brost has the floor. If you'd like to be on the list, I'll add you. Councilmember Brost.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, for Ward One, internet is the, is a very significant issue. And just so from my position, I would really always encourage progress. And, you know, and Dr. Gregg Notte, when he had mentioned, I think there was a meeting, he couldn't attend the Celebrate Wildwood Parade, and I didn't know about it, but my reaction was, wow, that's great. Okay? So I hope that as this report advances to issuance, that we all embrace it with an opportunity to make progress, not an opportunity to, like, John, you should have called me. I mean, way to go. I'm happy. There's, people in Homestead Estates have a big problem, and I'm glad there's a progress. And if the internet gets totally solved and I have nothing to do with it, it's still solved, and we've made progress. And I look forward to that report and coming up with a plan, even though I'm not optimistic the plan will necessarily be that pretty. So, but, but good job, John. I think it was great. There's probably a lot of people that are optimistic today on that.
So who?
Oh, I didn't get it. Okay.
Councilmember Edens.
Yep, so to rehash, we have two problems. One, we have a classification problem. As council member Gregg Notte eloquently stated, we do not meet the threshold. For example, USDA's population cap is 10,000 to qualify for their grants. And then we have our own funding issue with whatever solutions that we come up with. So I know we've kind of joked about this, that we wish we could draw a line around our wards with the highest need. And I would also like to say that Ward Two does have a few pockets that have issues as well. So I suppose my suggestion or question, depending on however you want to take it, is simply that to address the classification by trying to get a bill through the state legislature on the assumption that it's not unconstitutional or violating any other state statute, unless we can repeal them, that would somehow create a special development district for our city, and we would be an exception to the rule. And in order to tack that on and pass it through committee or amend it on the floor, that's going to take, one, a really proactive state legislature that can amend from the floor, or, two, a really good lobbyist. And is it my understanding that currently there is not a lobbyist contracted for this issue at this time?
We have no lobbyist contract at the moment with anyone for anything.
Okay. Well, I mean, this is maybe what we need to push for, again, through committee, and I've seen kind of how things work at the state legislative level. Things change very quickly on a daily basis in committee, and if you're not down there to monitor it in Jefferson City, and your representatives or state senators are not on those committees, they may not have really good control. And so we need to establish those relationships, and I am a big believer that the best way to do that would be a good firm that can be down there pounding every day, knocking on doors, keeping us updated. Not sure how cost effective that is. I am not on the committee as a liaison. I would just encourage you to keep an open mind and really consider that, because if the main problem is how we don't qualify because we're not rural, we have to try to change the classification. And the best way to do that is through a bill.
Agreed. So we had a lobbyist agreement that was in place until about a year ago with Armstrong Kiesdell Strategies, I believe was the name of it. I can't recall why that ended. Does anyone remember? Joe, do you know?
I do not. I apologize.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yeah, I'm trying to recollect, but I do vaguely recall that this came up in discussion at Admin Public Works, and at the time, several options were thrown around as far as how we would approach a lobbyist, whether we would continue with a contract, which that did not occur. Then we considered maybe more of an on-call type arrangement where as needed, and then no lobbyist. So at the time, the decision was that we would not have a lobbyist at the time, and therefore, we do not have that kind of service. And certainly, if that's something we want to revisit, we can bring that item back up on the agenda and look into that.
Without objection, I would ask that, would any be done? Would any member of the council have a problem with Admin Public Works looking at that issue? And then related, since that will take time and we may have some immediacy, particularly given that the Rural Internet Access Committee is going to be meeting soon to formalize a recommendation in all likelihood, I guess the question I would have, well, I'll just put it out there, I think that it might be good for us to have a meeting with our representatives that have, that might have a say in this soon, so we can at least do our own lobbying in the interim directly. And some argue that's better than a lobbyist. So we could maybe schedule a meeting with them, and I do think for that meeting, it would be helpful to have really as many council members as want to attend, attend, including those from wards one and six. So would there be any objection to us scheduling that kind of a meeting? So the meeting would be to, basically, as council member Edens suggested, see if we can, in some way, get their support for the very issue you and councilor Werther spoke to, which was the city's classification relative to obtaining funding. Correct, directly. Just one second. Councilmember, so is there any objection to that? And are you speaking to that, council, councilor Bartoni?
So I'm all for that, and you're talking about having like our state senator chats and house representative, or the representatives, correct?
Whoever, whatever governmental program it is, and whoever has potential jurisdiction or effect on jurisdiction decision-making with it would meet us here.
Okay. I would also encourage to have as many residents there as possible, because if they're going to talk to us, they're looking at a dozen votes. I'd like to have 100 voters out there.
Okay, that's a great point. Thank you for that. So before we go on, any objection to doing that?
Not an objection and support, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead, councilor Garitano.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree that we need to do a better job. I've talked, and I see some of our neighboring cities, and they make a very strong effort going down to Jefferson City, reaching out, talking to those representatives, state senators, and the relationships are really there, and that's what's needed, so that they're aware of the issues that affect us, so that this way they can fight for us. So again, I support this, and I think this reminds me back to an effort that we did about a year or two ago, where we also met with our legislators back then. So I think we need to continue doing stuff like this and fight for that rural internet.
Okay, so since there's no objection, councilmember Edens?
Maybe included, but I would ask that simultaneously either do it beforehand or have them come in on a phone, is any committee that could help us, whether it's going to be internet and phone utilities committees, or a rural development committee, that we go ahead and contact the former chairs, so that we get an idea of the likelihood of things. I mean, there's going to be a different session, obviously, coming up, but, you know, that would-
And we're going to be determining that in present time shortly, I think.
Okay, all right.
Given what's likely going to come out of the RAC. Okay, so no objection, we'll get that scheduled ASAP? And, Tam, you want to be in charge of that? Okay. Just a second. So we have, next on the list, councilmember Dodwell.
Joe, I just really quickly have a question for you. I know we've talked about AT&amp;T, Spectrum, Bayz ET, and Whisper are doing things, but residents out in that area, and Cheryl and Dr. Gregg Notte, you may know better than I do, is anybody doing anything with satellite at all? And if so, what are the methods that they use, and what's the efficacy of using satellite? Because I think that needs to go into the documentation that we're talking about putting together for our residents, not only what works, but what doesn't maybe work so well, but is an option. I just want to make sure that we are as informative as possible, and I'd also like that whatever information we put together through the Rural Internet Committee, that we share that with the entire city of Wildwood, so that all of the residents understand what is possible, what the costs associated with some of these, I mean, if you have to buy a satellite yourself, sometimes it's more expensive than if you're using a service. I don't know, because I've never had to have to do that in my ward. But I just want to make sure that all residents understand what this looks like outside of their particular view of things, so that we are clearly presenting the facts on what we currently have available, the steps that the city has already taken in order to accommodate those residents. And then we have, in my opinion, a book that we can take to state representatives, state senators, and say, look, we have not been just sitting here waiting for you. We have been working together with various sources to be able to come up with alternatives for our residents. We need your help now.
I would, that's a great suggestion. I would offer that maybe we do a white paper like we did when we had the issue with the EPA relative to the two superfund sites, you know, two pages, two to three pages, and it would summarize all these, because people are going to want a quick read on that. So without objection, without objection, we'll do that. Councilmember McKeon. Okay, thank you. Councilor Gregg Notte.
Yeah, I don't want to be-
Oh, my apologies. You're next on the list. Councilmember Remy. Councilor Gregg Notte.
Yeah, I don't want to be terribly didactic, but just to answer Katie's concerns, there's a lot of technical reasons. All of those options that you mentioned are available, but they're not ideal, and they don't all work. Part of the problem in our rural wards is the terrain. The terrain interferes with signal conduction, putting in even cable, and fiber optic is a problem because of digging through rock. So there's all kinds of issues. Satellite is inconsistent. Speeds are an issue. We've got, I can tell you that I know some friends who finally sold their house, but after three years of trying to sell the house, they couldn't sell it because the people who could afford to buy the house wanted high-speed internet, which they couldn't provide. And so this has been a problem, an ongoing problem for us in our area. This is a concern. And just a comment here, and Joe was right about the business, I can remember very well what happened, because I was one of the guys who led the charge to get rid of the bleed off of money that we were paying to a lobbyist who was doing nothing for us at the time. But we made the agreement that if we needed a lobbyist, we would go back and get one as needed, or as the doctors would say, PRN. I don't want to throw money at this. We're throwing enough money at this already. I think we need to spend, throw some time and some energy at it. If you want to do the delegation and drive to Jefferson City, I'll be happy to rent the bus. But we need to go down there, and we need to raise some dickens with these guys, enough to get their attention. And Mr. Bartoni's right, those guys out here in the audience, you folks on the camera, hi there, you need to let them know down there in Jefferson City that we need this help, and without your help, we can't get anywhere. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Remy, my apology.
Okay. I'm not negating anything anybody's said so far, but I did have some, maybe some alternative ideas. Would it be, maybe council member Jordan could spearhead a session to, with Mr. Vunich, to bring the current council up to date with all the efforts that have happened over the last couple of years, so that we understand exactly what's been done? The reason why I'm bringing this up is there's a reason. So I've talked about this issue, believe it or not, with a number of people. Some of us, like myself, build infrastructure across the world to do this sort of thing, and I've talked to people about this internet issue. And I'd love to know where we are with this, because I'd like to bring some people to the table. But I don't want to, I want to do that when I hear everything that we've done so far. And I think that, I don't know that there, you know, we had a great erosion task force, where we actually had a nice session of where we, everyone got brought up to speed. I think our council, we need to know everything, where we're at, what the costs are for the certain options that have been provided, satellite versus DSL fiber optic, speedify, any of the different ways to do this. And then perhaps bring other alternative ways. So just doing a quick search on grantforward.com, which is what I use every day to get my grants, there's over 19,000 grants that are not government-sponsored that you could actually apply for, for specific reasons, to try to do this, for children, senior citizens, access to internet. They go all the way up to $50 million. I'd be more than happy to help people if I knew where we've been so far.
So I think the first-
But there's nothing written, so I can't find it.
Well, I think there may be. The first thing I would do, if you haven't seen it, I think we ought to get to the council, the report from the consultant. That would be, the report from the consultant would be, I think, enlightening relative to where we stand, what our options are. Second, the white paper that we mentioned earlier, my intent with that was to do exactly, at least in part, what you're talking about, which would be a ready, ready go-to brief document that the public, the council, the legislators can go to and get exactly what you're looking for.
Perfect. I guarantee you, if I can get internet into the Serengeti and Malawi, we can get it into Wildwood. I don't know. Pretty possible.
The Serengeti is a little fatter.
I hear you. Councilmember Edens, thank you for your patience.
Yep, two things. Actually, council member Gregg Notte also brought it up. He mentioned buses. The one thing I wanted to add is that we do need to organize a legislative day, and we do need to get citizens down there. One way to do that would be to actually bus them, to organize an event, schedule meetings. We could do a display in the rotunda. And I'll leave you with this thought, because I did push for a discussion about revisiting a lobbyist as needed in Public Works. But that there, of course, is a difference between, you know, good lobbyists, bad lobbyists, and great lobbyists, and certainly, you don't want to waste money without seeing tangible results. But again, if you go from not being eligible at all for anything at state level, and some federal, because of classification, and you spend, I don't know, 30, 40, 50, up $1,000 on a lobbyist, but suddenly you can get back $2 million in grants, that's actually money well-spent, because the return on it is better than nothing. And so I would argue, I would argue that. If there's potential for it to work, then it's a good investment upfront. But please, for the two council member liaisons for the committee, you know, please consider actually creating a day event, you know, Wildwood residents at the Capitol advocating for this, organized, clear, consistent messages, typed-out talking points. And the best way to also recruit is for you guys to put your, you know, boots on the ground in your wards, and I'll work on mine, for citizens that have trouble. We want to get them there and put, you know, put pressure, but organized and from the city.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Seeing done, I would entertain a motion, as we have no action items, to adjourn the work session, and then we'll reconvene the meeting at 7:00. May I, councilor Bartoni, second by? May be Councilmember Bartoni seconded by Council... You can, before that motion gets a second. Councilmember McKeon?
Thank you. If everybody's okay with this, I just want to do a miscellaneous item real quick on something that came up today, is respect with the minutes approval that we're going to have in the main session. If that's okay, can I proceed?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So, what I noticed in the minutes that we're approving today, I guess it's the, looks like this with the little chart. I know, I'm sorry if you're far away. But what I've noticed is that when we're late to a meeting, especially the work session, it's noted that we're, what time we arrived, but we're marked absent. And this came to my attention because the Wildwood Gazette marked me absent, which was a mistake on behalf of the printer and not the city. So, as you guys know, attendance is very important for representation of our wards, and I find it very serious that it's recorded properly. So, talking with Sam and the mayor, along with Jessica today, I think that the way that this has been marked in the past, it's been inconsistent. And I think that we need to come up with a policy or some procedure unless Mr. Young states otherwise. I didn't see it in the charter, that we treat this as, you're not absent necessarily unless, you know, we come up with these rules. But I'd like to defer to the Admin and Public Works Division because I've seen it recorded differently on each minute set. And I think it changes with the city clerk, depending on how things are ran. So, if that's okay with you guys, I'm going to ask for an amendment on the minutes to remove the absent checkmarks for myself and Mr. Remy so it doesn't mark as absent, and then maybe defer that back to Admin and Public Works for a policy going forward, instead of amending all the past minutes.
Okay, thank you. So, Attorney Young, before I entertain a motion on that, is there any Roberts rule issue? I see you looking at the rules.
I'm not aware of any, but I'll review it in advance for the next meeting.
Okay. So, as Councilmember McKeon has indicated, a couple of things. Number one, a motion to have this matter looked at as a matter of policy by Admin Public Works. And number two, at the main meeting, when we discuss the minutes, and obviously, I wouldn't have a say in that unless it's a tie vote. But, I mean, given that it was one minute, and I think, what, six minutes for Councilmember Remy? Four minutes? You know, that seems reasonable. Okay, so, Councilmember Dodwell, I saw your hand. You want to make that motion?
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember McKeon, are you making the motion then?
Please.
Okay, so we have a first and a second from Councilmember Dodwell. Any discussion on the motion? See no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, thank you for bringing that in for the conversation about it. Okay, see nothing further. Now, I would entertain, Councilmember Bartoni, you still want to make a motion to adjourn? Seconded by Councilmember Remy. Non-debatable, all in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, and we will start the main meeting at 7 o'clock. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council for Monday, September 9, 2019. Ms. Sturmleger, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McCune.
Here.
Councilmember Boat.
Present.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remy.
Present.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Bros.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano.
Present.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Here.
Okay, thank you. For those of you in the audience with us this evening, thank you for being here. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device that is on, if you would please turn it to silent while we're in session, we would appreciate it. And for those of you that are comfortably able, if you'd please stand with us for the saying of our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from the August 26, 2019 work session and regular agenda, I'm sorry, regular meeting. If there are no comments, but I believe there are, Councilmember McCune.
Hi again. So I would like to amend the minutes to reflect that, I don't know what page number you want to refer this to, Jessica, but you know what the page I'm referring to, is remove the absent X's against McCune and Remy.
The reason being they were one minute and four minutes late, and therefore here for the overwhelming part of the meeting. And as we discussed in our work session, this is an issue that will be sent to our Admin Public Works for Development of Policy. Without objection, any member of the council, could we do that simply as a matter of amendment without really making it go through the process? Any objection?
No.
By consensus.
I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I need to abstain because I was out ill last meeting.
That time is coming up shortly.
And can I just-
I haven't yet called for a vote. Councilmember Remy.
And just to add on to Councilmember McCune's, it was for the work session that we were one minute and four minutes late.
Correct.
Yes.
You know, actually, to Councilmember Jordan's point, given that she wasn't here, is that the issue, you were not here? I think it would be better to do it as an amendment, because if we do it by consensus, she won't have the ability to abstain. So we'll go through the formality. So you want to make that motion that it be the minutes be amended as you indicated?
The minutes to be amended for the work session attendance to reflect that both Councilmember myself and Remy were present.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Werther. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Dodwell.
Just for the Admin Public Works meeting, could we very easily just add in a change in process that gives every council member either a 10-minute window or a 15-minute window to arrive to a meeting? The traffic sometimes trying to get out here by 6:00 from working anywhere in St. Louis County can be a challenge, so.
That's exactly, I think the committee will make, have that debate. Yep. Okay, any discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan. Okay, so now back to the minutes as amended. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Made by Councilmember McCune, minutes as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
We didn't have a second.
I'm sorry.
We didn't have a second.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilmember Remy, thank you. Councilmember McCutcheon. All right, now.
And I abstained.
We're going to get to abstaining.
I thought you asked for it, so.
We did, but out of order. So all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? I'm sorry, any noes? Any abstentions?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving into public participation, "Public comment is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who is seated to your left of the podium. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five-minute time limitation, and I will let you know when that time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official you would like to respond. That official will make note of it, and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting, and we may also post any responses on the City Council page of our website. And finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. This means that interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited, and I want to thank everyone in advance for following these." First speaker card, please.
Patricia Bush, Ward 6.
First, I want to thank everybody for actually passing the bill for Woods Avenue Reconstruction. And I have a PowerPoint to play here, and while Rick is pulling that up, I was told by one of the police officers that when the transformer blew up the day of the flood, on the 26th, and was on fire, that the fire truck turned around and wouldn't come down Woods Avenue because of all the debris, fretting they were going to puncture a tire. Anyway, that's real concerning, and I have another little one on Internet. I wasn't aware of it until the gentleman spoke last time about his Internet. I have no Internet at my house. It is worse than dial-up. I have to walk out to the end of my driveway, and when there's a power failure, I really have no Internet in my house. I have to go outside to find it. So anyway, that's just another point I'd like to bring up, and I'd like everybody to kind of look at, because I don't, there's several people on my street that don't have Internet also, so anyway.
How are we coming on that PowerPoint, Rick?
Sorry. So, point of order, Mr. Mayor?
What is your point of order?
Will closed captioning be shown in the meetings so that folks can read while people are talking?
I believe it is.
If I'm not noticing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ansel.
Yes, you might have to toggle, essentially, there's a switch in the window, if you click on the CC button, it should show up.
Yes, for those of you who are watching, we have begun closed captioning of our meetings for those who are impaired. Okay.
Can everyone see that?
We can.
Okay. And there's, that's a, pardon. Okay, and that's an aerial view of Woods Avenue. And actually, the yellow depicts the runoff from, and the blue, anyway, I can't read that and talk about it, so it's kind of self-explanatory if you guys want to just read I did speak to MSD about the one that flows into our street, and they said that it was not a Wildwood situation, but they were going to speak to the owner of that subdivision for the lack of maintenance on their detention ponds. And that's, that's an area that's actually known as the floodplain, which is right at the corner of 109 and Woods Avenue, which is where MSD comes into play. And that's it, okay. And go to the next one. All right. And there are photos to back all this up. That's a part of Woods Avenue where actually the road, when you're coming down the hill, that, another part that is actually going to break off. It's deteriorated. And that's a culvert pipe on Woods Avenue there that is actually totally covered in rocks and debris. That is a mass of rock that is coming down from up above somewhere, and which is covering every time it floods Woods Avenue. And to have piles this high, where they've had to remove them. And that's another area that comes down from up above that's bringing a lot of rock that's actually adding to the bed of my creek, which has brought it up to my land level. Okay, that's a video, I think, if you'll play it.
Somebody supposed you're at 4:30, how long is the?
I'm, pardon me?
You're-
Have I used up my time?
Just about, I just wanted, I didn't know how long your video was, so I wondered.
All right, well, this is important, but you can go on to the next video then. This is my driveway. This is my driveway, actually, the day of the flood. Okay, and that is actually the creek before it comes to the last corner to my house. Creek banks, so this is level with my land right now, with a creek rock as washed down from up above. And there is a detention pond that needs a lot of attention. Go on to the other photos. Okay. Well, this is West Ridge Detention Pond that is flowing down. It's overflowed, and that's the one that they're going to get a hold of, the owner of that property or the subdivision to actually repair. But it is full, and it is rolling down the hill. And that's another picture of it. Sorry if I've used up my time, this is really important, my house is at the end of-
It is, I just have to apply it equally to everyone, so.
Okay.
So we, how much more do you have?
All right. Speed through it, there's one, speed through. This is, that's my drive, this is my driveway and barn. You can, if that one would play, this is, and I can leave this PowerPoint here if you could like, we would like to look at that.
I was just going to suggest, that's a great idea, and we can get that distributed.
Okay, I would appreciate that if you would.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, and I apologize to everybody for using up your time, but.
No worries. Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Thanks for hearing me tonight. I'm Chuck Cannon, Ward 4. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of Joe Farmer to be appointed to the opening in Ward 4 council seat. Joe's been a lifelong resident of the area, attended high school at Lafayette down the road. He's a wonderful neighbor, offers to help people, but knows when to back away also, and thinks the old man can fix it himself. We'll try that. Joe's been active up at Green Pines Elementary where his two daughters attend, as well as serving as trustee of the subdivision, West Glen Farms. He will be an asset to your council if you would select him to replace the opening that is there. That's all I have to say, and I'll give the balance of my time to whomever.
Well, I appreciate that offer. Unfortunately, we can't do that, but thank you so much for your testimony. Next speaker card, please.
Wes Fletcher, Ward 4.
My name's Wes Fletcher. I'm also here to speak on behalf of Joe Farmer, part of Ward 4, for the appointment to City Councilman. I'm a trustee with the West Glen Farms subdivision. I met Joe the day we both became trustees for that subdivision. It became apparent very early on that Joe had a passion for helping people. Hadn't known him before becoming a trustee. He brings a lot of, a lot of knowledge with his background in real estate. It became very apparent early on that he helped to coordinate our modernization of our communication between trustees, between our website, allowing for us to document conversations with neighbors, to record a lot of our, the indentures. We all three share responsibility for responding to questions from neighbors, but Joe was almost always the first one to respond if there's a question, complaint, or inquiry, even if it's something that is outside the jurisdiction of us as trustees, if it's something that they need to talk to the city, or maybe a utility. He is constantly jumping in to provide that information in a professional, but also kind of a friendly way. I think even today, somebody approached him, asking questions about, about this whole process, and he's not even a part of it, but he stopped and took the time to answer the questions, instead of saying, "Go talk to one of the appointed members, I'm not appointed yet." So it's just representation, representative of his work ethic and just his desire to be a part of the city and represent the subdivision he lives in. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Doreen Norris, Ward 5.
I'm also here, Doreen Norris, Ward 4, I'm also here in support of Joe Farmer. I've lived in West Glen Farms for 33 years, and the first 31 years I lived there, we had a lot of difficulty getting anything done in our area. And two years ago, Joe and Wes and the third trustee came on board, and it has been a tremendous difference in our neighborhood. The communication process that they use is excellent between the homeowners, and it's very quick, it's very professional, and I think that he would be a great asset as a council member. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
That was the last speaker card.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe there were any questions to officials, so moving into mayor's announcements and appointments, no announcements. We do have two appointments, and the first is Mr. Joe Farmer, to fill the vacant spot for Ward 4 on the council. As you know, in the packet, you have my memorandum of appointment, setting forth the reasons for that and his background, and I am honored to present him tonight. Councilmember Dodwell, you want to make the motion to approve? All right, so we have a motion, and did you want to say anything?
I've known Joe through his trustee activities with the West Glen Farms subdivision, and I'm glad to hear that several individuals indicated that with the current group of trustees, I've lived out here for 28 years, and so it's been really nice to see over the past four or five years, the improvements that that entire subdivision has made, and I'm glad to hear that the communications are going so well. So I look forward to working with Joe, representing not only the residents in our ward, but throughout the city of Wildwood, and I'm going to make a motion that we move forward with this approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Second by, second by Councilmember, you can, just, if you'll bear with me, just one second. Second by Councilmember Greg Noni, and I just want to acknowledge Mr. Farmer, who is in the audience this evening and was here for our work session, so any of you have any questions for him? Councilmember Greg Noni.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I called Joe and I talked with him. As was pointed out, he grew up around here, and he told me his parents moved here in 1991, which is about when my wife and I moved here with our two girls. So he saw the incorporation at close range. He thought I was going to ask him if he'd read all the documents of the city. I didn't ask him that question. In fact, I'm pretty sure that he probably hadn't. Most people usually don't, at least not at first. But I did ask him a question that I thought was important, at least to me and to a lot of people I know, which is, do you understand why Wildwood is here? And he had the right answers to that question. He understood about the development and the protection of the area. I think his comment, if I can quote you correctly, Joe, is that, he said, "We have a lot of green space in Wildwood, we don't have to fill it up." That's a good answer. So I'm going to support his candidacy tonight, as you saw, I just seconded his motion, so if you're wondering why I'm voting yes, that's my answer to why I'm voting yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please, on the motion to approve Mr. Farmer as a member of the council representing Ward 4.
Councilmember Stevens.
Councilmember McCune.
Yes.
Councilmember Boat.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Remy.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bros.
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan.
I want to second to what he said about Mr. Bros and the green space, but I would add to that, that I also spoke with him, and I very much like the fact that he was supportive of the need for high-speed Internet in certain areas of this city, so I would gladly say yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Farmer. So if you will please come forward, we have the necessary paper here for swearing you in, and we're going to put you on the bench.
Okay. Getting started right away, I guess.
Absolutely.
21 minutes late, though.
Are you ready to write in? I feel honored. Do you have a law? Do you pursue these one on? State that possesses qualifications to drive a law. Offices. Councilman. The office of councilmember, please, in this county, state of Missouri. That I will support the Constitution of the United States of the state of Missouri. That I will support the Constitution of the United States of the state of Missouri. Charter of laws of the state. The provisions of the Charter of the city and all the applicable laws of the state. ordinances and laws of the city of Wildwood, they will tell me. And the ordinances and laws of the city of the state of Missouri. And the need of the office of government. And if they could name itself, the office of councilmember.
Okay, welcome, and now moving to the next of the two appointments, Mr. Scott Collier to fill the vacancy we have with city marshal, the city marshal position, and Mr. Collier is here this evening. Mr. Collier, if you'd like to raise your hand, thank you for being here. You also, councilmembers, have presumably reviewed the appointment memo that I provided to you earlier relative to his background. So if there are any questions, be happy to entertain those, otherwise I would entertain a motion to approve Mr. Collier as our next city marshal. Councilmember Werther.
I'll make that motion, and I also want to thank Mr. Collier for the opportunity to have a nice discussion yesterday, so thank you so much, look forward to working with you.
Is there a second? Councilmember Remy, second to the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please, on the appointment of Mr. Collier.
Councilmember McCune.
Yes.
Councilmember Boat.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Remy.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bros.
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Marshall Collier, congratulations, and thank you for being willing to be on our team. Okay, moving next into the public hearings, we have two. Ms. Sturmleger, would you please read the provision relative to the public hearing on the authorization of an amendment to see a planned commercial district ordinance?
The City Council authorized an amendment to the C-8 Planned Commercial District Ordinance in June 2018 to allow for the use of an existing building for a coffee shop, lounge, bar, event space, and shared-use office concept. The Miller House, St. Louis County's P.C. dot 1289 Cliff, Cliff Ruffcar. The determination which allows these activities was accompanied by a certain set of conditions that were intended to ensure they would not cause issues upon surrounding lots or roadways. Among the conditions relating to these allowances for the requirement for review of these activities after the initial six-month period of time by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council, with an annual report to be issued each year thereafter. With the grand opening of the Miller House occurring in March 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission will conduct its initial six-month review of the operation's compliance to city requirements and responses to any comments received on the same from the general public. The Miller House is located south of Manchester Road, east side of East Avenue, street address 2612 East Avenue, locator number 24B 510441.
Thank you, Joe. Do you have any comments you would like to mention relative to this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, as was described in the advertisement just read into tonight's record, the City Council requested that after six months of operation, the Miller House would have a review of its operating parameters and any other items that might be of interest to the city. In preparation for this review, the Department of Planning contacted the St. Louis County Police Department and the Metro West Fire Protection District to ascertain if there had been any issues, problems, or other items of interest that needed to be noted. Along with those two contacts, the Department of Planning also reviewed its files relative to code enforcement. A week ago, last Tuesday, shy of a week, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered all of the information and issued a unanimous opinion that no changes to the existing governing ordinance were necessary since Ms. Miller and her operation of the Miller House had met and exceeded all requirements associated therein. And therefore, tonight, as part of the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending no changes to the ordinance, and the next review would be approximately one year from today.
Okay, thank you. Before we entertain questions for Joe- Okay, thank you. Before we entertain questions for Joe or comments, do we have any speaker cards relative to this item, Ms. Mlinger?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Does any councilmember have any comments or questions for Joe? Councilmember Dodwell?
I would just like to say thank you very much for working with Ms. Miller. And I think she's got an interesting and hopefully thriving business, and we want more businesses like that and more business owners like that in the city of Wildwood. And thanks to Julie, I'm very much for helping her work through that process with the Department of Planning where needed, and for the Department of Planning to work as quickly as possible with her on these efforts. So I'm glad to see that we are supporting the personally-owned businesses that are occurring here in Wildwood, and look forward to more of those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Joe, are you looking for any action in particular from the council this evening on this?
Only, the only action the department would seek is if the city council felt the Planning and Zoning Commission had erred in its assessment and wanted further review. Otherwise, no action is necessary.
Okay. Does anyone feel that? All right. I see no one wanting to question that, so...
Mr. Mayor, I failed to mention that Ms. Miller is in attendance, so if there's any questions of her directly, I'm sure she'd be glad to get up to the podium.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Miller? Councilmember Garitano?
Thank you. I don't have a question. It's more of a statement for Ms. Miller. I just want to thank you for your attentiveness and your interest in wanting to know feedback from the surrounding community. And I know you've been very quick to address any slightest potential concern that could come up. So I think you've been a very good neighbor, and your neighbors have said the same about you. So thanks for being an asset, and it's great that not only do you have your business there, but we see you at the farmer's market too on Saturday. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. All right. Next, Ms. Mlinger, would you please read the request to allow modification of the site-specific ordinance relative to St. Louis County PC 219-85?
A request of the Department of Planning to allow the modification of the site-specific governing ordinance associated with St. Louis County's P.C. dot 219-85, Alfred Hicks and J.L. Mason of Missouri, Inc., south side of Manchester Road, west of State Route 100, street address 16506 Manchester Road, locator number 23U 120480, thereby correcting certain Scrivener's errors that occurred as the document was transcribed from one format to another at the time of its most recent amendment in the fall 2018.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Maybe a brief explanation. As you can see from the advertisement that was just read into tonight's record by the city clerk, this particular zoning has been in place now almost 34 years. Over the course of that 34-year period of time, St. Louis County and now the city of Wildwood has amended the ordinance to address new issues, concerns, or requests by property owners associated with the overall development, the harbors at Lake Chesterfield. Over that period of time, the amendments were either inserted into the original ordinance, making a consistent document, or more recently, were not necessarily inserted at the time of the amendment. That ultimately led to a decision to reformat and to collectively add all the components into a single document. During that process, one item that had been deleted in 1996 was then shown as being reintroduced and acted upon favorably by city council. That is an error, and the department wants to correct its error, and the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously supported correcting the error and removing the previous item that was deleted in 1996 and reintroduced in 2018. So tonight, after public comment and questions from city council, the department would respectfully request authorization to prepare the necessary legislation. Thank you.
And this is largely editorial to correct a ministerial matter, so...
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any speaker cards, Ms. Mlinger?
No.
Are there any questions for Mr. Vantage? Councilmember McKeon?
Joe, well done. This was really laid out well, and I think you did a great job if you guys got to read the 30-page memo. So I'm in favor of this, and I'd like to go ahead and move for a motion for legislation.
Thank you. Councilmember McKeon, seconded by Councilmember Werther. Any discussion on the motion to prepare legislation as requested by the Department of Planning? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, and my apologies for the air.
Okay, moving into legislation, second readings. Bill 2495 is before the council for final passage, and it concerns Ward One. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Greg Nani, seconded by Councilmember Bros. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Mlinger, would you please read Bill 2495?
Bill 2495, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood, Missouri to execute a consultant services agreement on behalf of the city of Wildwood with O.R. colon Associates LLC for easement acquisition services on the Manchester Road Shared Use Path Project within the city of Wildwood.
Thank you. Rick, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to the bill?
No, sir, but I'm available for any questions or comments from the council.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Stevens?
Is this raising the overall cost, or is this $28,000 within the original budgeted item?
Councilmember, this would be for the right-of-way acquisition, and I think I made reference to this perhaps at the last meeting. As part of the mid-year budget, I did adjust the budget amount for this line item upwards to reflect this amount for the right-of-way contract that I'm asking for you to prove tonight.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Mlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2495.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Bros?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens? Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Bill passes. Moving next to Bill 2496, it's before the council for final passage, and it concerns Ward Eight. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Garitano, seconded by Councilmember Stevens. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Mlinger, please read Bill 2496.
Bill 2496, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the consolidation of two parcels of ground, addressed as 2512 and 2524, Lindy Lane, identified by St. Louis County Assessors locator numbers 24V 530533 and 24V 530542, both being located in the east half of the southwest quarter of Section 1, Township 44 North, Range 3 East, city of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically situated on the east side of Lindy Lane, north of Manchester Road, thereby creating a single legal lot of record, which is in greater conformance with the acreage requirements of the NU Non-Urban Resident District to be hereafter known as Consolidated Lot A.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2496?
No, sir, but I am available for any comments or questions.
Any comments or questions for Joe? All right, seeing none, Ms. Mlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2496.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Bros?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Okay, Bill 2496 passes. Moving next to Bill 2497, it's before the council also for final passage, and it concerns Ward One. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Bros, seconded by Councilmember Greg Nani. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Mlinger, please read Bill 2497.
Bill 2497, an ordinance authorizing the division of a 6.89-acre tract of land per the lot-split procedure of Chapter 420.110 Subdivision and Development Regulations of the Wildwood Municipal Code for a property identified by St. Louis County locator number 23Y 440033, located in the southwest quarter of Section 33, Township 45 North, Range 3 East, city of Wildwood, Missouri, and more specifically situated on the south side of Wild Horse Creek Road, west of State Route 100, for the purposes of creating two parcels of ground hereafter to be known as Lots 1 and 2 of Nordman Estates.
Thank you, Joe. Anything? Joe, anything you would like to mention relative to Bill 2497?
No, sir, but again, the department is available to answer any questions or respond to comments.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Quick question. Our contractor out here said that last time that there was a couple of proposals for this property. Have you received anything yet? We have not received anything, but the gentleman representing McKelvey Homes, I believe, is going to proceed forward with the construction of a new dwelling. So the, this will be reviewed by, this is a non-urban, and it's a three-acre area. This will be reviewed by P&amp;Z or not? It will not be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but the Department of Planning and the Department of Public Works will review the submittal for the new single-family dwelling. And as part of that, we always now look at stormwater management issues. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Mlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2497.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Bros?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Okay, Bill 2497 passes. Finally, for second readings, moving to Bill 2498, it's before the council and for final passage, and concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell. Is there a second to the motion for the second reading of the bill? Seconded by Councilmember Bartoni. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Mlinger, please read Bill 2498.
Bill 2498, an ordinance revising the budget for the city of Wildwood, Missouri, for the fiscal year commencing on January 1, 2019, and ending on December 31, 2019.
All right, thank you. City Administrator Ansem, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2498?
Nothing yet at this time, but available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the city administrator? Councilmember Stevens?
I guess maybe for Sam, or maybe for Joe, since he was here as acting city administrator through this last year. If you just look at the number on the increase that's going on here, the 482,000, seems like a big number, but can you give any context of why, how we got to that number, and how it relates to the overall budget, just so people at home or anybody in the, you know, that looks at that, if they have any concerns, maybe you can ease some concerns?
Couple of issues that I'm aware of, and Mr. Brown and Mr. Vantage can correct me if I'm wrong. Large part with the adjustment this year is due to additional salt and snow removal operations that were required. And at around this time last year, there was a recommendation made by the former city administrator to close the Road and Bridge Fund and use those dollars to fund some capital improvement projects. After reviewing that action and talking with staff, we feel it's appropriate to keep the Road and Bridge Fund as a separate item in the budget, just for accounting purposes and for transparency. So as a result of keeping that in there, we're going to have to transfer some of the money from the Road and Bridge Fund over to capital improvements to cover expenditures.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Ms. Mlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2498.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Bros?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Okay, Bill 2498 passes. Moving into first readings, Bill 2499 is before the council for first reading, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember McCutcheon, seconded by Councilmember Stevens. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Mlinger, please read Bill 2499.
Bill 2499, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, that hereby amends various sections of Chapter 415 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Wildwood and enacts a new section 415.610 regulating medical marijuana facilities within the city of Wildwood, Missouri, which includes the activities of cultivation, manufacture, testing, transportation, and sale, all being consistent with the action of the Planning and Zoning Commission contained in its letter of recommendation dated August 19, 2019.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to the bill?
Just a couple of brief comments, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, two weeks ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission presented its letter of recommendation to city council at a public hearing. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the city council authorized the preparation of legislation. This legislation has been formatted for a number of months by our city attorney and was the subject of review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. There have been additions made to the original draft ordinance. They relate to items that the Planning and Zoning Commission identified that they believed important, that went beyond the state requirements relative to land use controls.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe? All right, seeing none, the bill will be on the council's agenda for its next meeting. Thank you, Joe. Moving to Bill 2500, it's before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward Three. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Ward Three, made by Councilmember Dillard. Is there a second to the bill relative to Ward Three? Made by Councilmember Dodwell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Mlinger, please read Bill 2500.
Bill 2500, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Wildwood approving the adjustment of certain common boundary lines between three existing parcels of ground, known as attractive land, in the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 26, Township 45 North, Range 3 East, city of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically situated east side of State Route 100, south of Bloom Farm Road, and for the purposes of reconfiguring their common boundary lines and establishing a dedicated ingress and egress easement to them for access purposes, hereafter Bloom Farm Boundary Adjustment plat, thereby in accordance with the city's requirements as set forth in its subdivision and development regulations.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2500?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, this is a boundary adjustment plat, which means that three existing lots are part of this plat, and three exist, and three new lots will be, will remain as part of the new plat. The intent is to create a greater level of conformity, particularly relating to access to one of the existing lots. One lot does not have dedicated access to it. It is under the same ownership as the lot that does have frontage on State Route 109. But the intent of this adjustment is the eventuality of the development of the property to the east, which is 27 acres in size. It is owned by Payne Family Homes, and their intent is to develop it under the non-urban resident district regulations.
As in consistent with those regulations?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Stevens?
What, why wouldn't the easement come from Garden Valley Drive versus 109? For the ingress egress?
The easement is actually from Route 109. I may have used, not the best of colors, the kind of orange color in the middle of the plat. That's the proposed ingress egress easement. The dash lines are the property boundaries.
Right, but like, just for public safety reasons, wouldn't it make more sense to have it coming off of the Garden Valley Drive versus 109, or?
Well, it's certainly a, it's certainly a point well taken, given what Route 109 experiences in terms of speeds and traffic. But it's common ground, not owned by Payne Family Homes, and so probably getting access across Garden Valley Farms, common ground would be difficult.
Right, any other questions?
Thank you.
That bill will also, 2500, be on the council's agenda for its next meeting. Moving to Bill 2501, it's before the council for first reading, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of Bill 2501? Made by Councilmember Farmer, seconded by Councilmember McKeon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Sternberger, please read Bill 2501.
Bill 2501, an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, on behalf of this community, to execute an agreement with St. Louis Home Fires Barbecue Bash LLC for the organization and management of the 2019 Wildwood Barbecue Bash Event at the St. Louis Community College Wildwood Campus.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to the bill?
Well, it's the 11th hour. We did everything else but the agreement with the organizer, so my apologies. The agreement had been revised by City Attorney Young approximately two years ago. The agreement and content is almost identical, with just the dates and obligations in terms of cost adjusted.
So, when you mentioned the 11th hour, as in, you mean that as in you would like to have a second reading?
Not that much of an 11th hour.
Okay, that's fine.
But close.
Just want to make sure. Councilmember McKeon?
Thank you for asking.
Oh, that's fine. Councilmember McKeon?
That's what I was going to ask, do you want a second reading tonight?
No, ma'am. The event is after our next meeting, so we should be fine.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for Joe? All right, seeing none, moving to Bill 2502. It's before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward One. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilor Greg Noni, seconded by Councilor Bros. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Sternberger, please read Bill 2502.
Bill 2502, an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the division of a 6.89 acre tract of land, known as Adjusted Lot B of Biddle Buck Ridge, locator number 22W310132, which is part of the southwest quarter of Section 35, Township 45 North, Range 3 East, City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically situated on the north side of Hoffman Road, west of Pond Road, for the purposes of subdividing it into two parcels of ground hereafter to be known as lots one and two of Biddle Buck Ridge, both resultant property being in excess of three acres each.
Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2502?
Each of the lots, as part of this plat, will be in excess of three acres, which is consistent with its underlying zoning district designation, which is the non-urban resident district. And again, the lot split is served by Holman Road, which does not meet the rural roadway standards, but the City Council has a policy to allow one lot split regardless of the circumstances, and none thereafter.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Joe, or any comments? Councilor Greg Noni?
Yeah, quick question, is there a house up there already? I think there is, isn't there?
I believe on lot, which will be Lot Two.
Right.
I think Lot One is the one that is being created and is vacant.
And no, nothing to be built there yet, that you know?
Not that I know.
Okay, I have a lot of interest in that area that's real close to Pond Road, and...
Yes, Holman Road intersects with Pond Road.
Right, I know. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Moving next to Bill 2503, it's before the council for first reading, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Werther. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Sternberger, please read Bill 2503.
Bill 2503, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, to execute a standstill and utility relocation agreement on behalf of the City of Wildwood with Missouri American Water Company for the relocation and the construction, installation, and maintenance of certain water utility facilities within the City of Wildwood.
Thank you. Rick, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2503?
Yes, Mayor, if I may briefly. This bill pertains to the need to relocate the Missouri American Water Company's main that is underneath the pavement. As you may know, with the Streetscape project, we've been, over the last few months, relocating utilities, and the Missouri American Water Company is the last utility to be relocated at this point. We would like them to relocate outside the pavement to facilitate future taps of the water main. However, to do that, they have to relocate within a permanent easement that we acquired previously for the project, and they've objected to some of the contract language, or some of the verbiage within that permanent easement, so forth, thus that is necessitating the need for the agreement. And I'll refer to John Young with regard to the specifics regarding the agreement, but that's in a nutshell what's going on. We had previously respectfully asked for potential two readings tonight, although we had a very late 5:00 change to the bill, so I think at this point, it might be better not to do that. I don't have a hard copy of the change in front of you, I was hoping to do that, but absent that revised copy, unless City Attorney Young feels differently, I would suggest we don't do a double reading tonight.
Is the change, I mean, if you need it, is the change easily explainable, and just sort of editorial, or is it editorial, or is it a substantive change that you would feel more comfortable waiting?
I think it would be better for City Attorney Young to explain it, and I'm certainly fine with that, if that's okay with the council, it's not something I want to try to explain.
It is a change that can be easily explained to the council at this time, if the council...
Okay, without objection from the council, why don't we hear that explanation, and then we can decide whether to assist with a second reading?
Okay. Missouri American Water had requested a revision to Paragraph Six of Exhibit A to the ordinance, specifically to delete the following language, beginning in the fourth line from the bottom, and beginning with the words, "And M.A.W.C. shall be solely reliable for all costs maintaining, repairing, and replacing the area of the Manchester Road right-of-way grant, comma, and M.A.W.C. shall assume the city's responsibilities and liabilities under the Manchester Road right-of-way grant."
So, in a nutshell, putting the legalese aside, what does that mean for the benefit of the council?
What that means is in the very, 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 very remote chance that the city would ever want to vacate this right-of-way, and M.A.W.C., Missouri American Water, objected to our vacation of that right-of-way. We would maintain the right-of-way while they continue to use it for their utility.
Okay. So, is there any objection from any member of the council to entertaining a motion for second reading? It takes a supermajority vote, but I want to follow the will of the council on this. Councilor Greg Noni?
Yeah, I have a quick question for the attorney here. They have reliability for any repairs that have to be done, if they ever break a line, and they have to tear up the road, they repair it?
They do, under the terms of the agreement, because we're using porous concrete, I believe that's the term.
For the areas that is under the sidewalk, that's correct.
Correct. So, since we're using a porous concrete, they had some objection to having to replace porous concrete, because they're not familiar with it. So, the way we've got it set up is they will pay the standard concrete equivalent, and we would cover the difference, and actually do the repair.
Okay.
Okay, so, with that, and before, just procedurally, we would need a motion to amend if this motion passes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, you've heard the change, there's not necessarily right or wrong on this, but it would facilitate the original intent of the Department of Public Works if we did a second reading. Does anyone want to make a motion for a second reading in light of the city attorney's explanation? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember McKeon. This would be a two-thirds vote. If this passes, we will then go to an amendment along the lines, I'll ask for an amendment to the bill along the lines as indicated by the city attorney. Councilor Stevens?
Rick, what works going on in the next two weeks? Is there any, is it necessary to do the second reading now, or are they still moving power lines and everything else, or?
Well, the thought was, yeah, we are literally at that point, where they're the next utility up for relocation, so if we can get this done, they should be able to get started sooner rather than later, certainly within the next two weeks, so hopefully this week, yeah.
Okay, we'll do a voice vote on the motion for second reading. If it appears close, we'll do something different. All in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the two-thirds requisite has been achieved. I would now entertain a motion to amend the bill along the lines with the deletion as indicated to section, you want to give us the section number for the minutes?
It is Paragraph Six of the Exhibit A to the ordinance.
Okay, would any member of the council like to make that motion? Made by Councilmember Garitano, seconded by Councilmember McKeon. Debate is now on the amendment only, and then if this passes, we'll go back to the main motion, as amended or not. Any discussion on the amendment? All right, seeing none, we'll do this by voice vote as well, even if it doesn't work, if it appears close, we'll go to a roll call. All in favor of the motion to amend as made to Bill 2503, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, we're now back to Bill 2503 as amended, and it has been approved for second reading. Mr. Sternberger, please read Bill 2503.
Bill 2503, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, to execute a standstill and utility relocation agreement on behalf of the City of Wildwood with Missouri American Water Company for the relocation and the construction, installation, and maintenance of certain water utility facilities within the City of Wildwood.
As amended.
As amended.
So, we'll need to state that, as amended, at the end. Okay? Any questions or comments? Rick, do you have anything further? Councilor Werther?
Yes. Mr. Brown, or Mr. Young, realizing that we're pushing this forward, I'd still like to be able to see that revised language for that Section Six, so if we can provide that to council, I'd appreciate it.
You want to see it now?
No, just after this, tomorrow, whatever.
Okay, sure.
So, he'll email that to everyone.
I can do that.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Sternberger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2503 as amended.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Bros?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Okay, Bill 2503 passes, thank you. That concludes the legislation. We have one resolution, Resolution 2019-33, it's before the council, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-33? Made by Councilmember Garitano, seconded by Councilmember Bertolino. Mr. Sternberger, please read Resolution 2019-33.
Resolution 2019-33, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, on behalf of this community, to authorize and execute a purchase order with Green To Go LLC for the 2019 Wildwood Barbecue Bash Event.
Okay, thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to this resolution?
No, sir, but I am available for any questions or comments.
I believe this is from the last meeting, and you needed to tweak a couple of things, is that correct?
Yes, we're waiting for a better number from Green To Go relative to the barbecue bash, and the city's participation in the payment of electrical services and lighting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Joe? Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2019-33, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, we have one opposed, Councilmember Greg Noni. Any other opposed? Resolution carries, passes. Moving into miscellaneous, we have one receipt and file. Joe, do you want to speak to PZ, the moratorium extension, PZ 1 and 1A-99?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, for the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider an action, it either needs to initiate by resolution that action, or, in the other scenario, the City Council do the same. Recently, the city attorney and the Department of Planning had discussed the need to more formalize the moratorium that is in place for the Strucker Forest site. That is the site that's abutting the Russell Bliss property, and a portion of is part of the Ellisville Bliss site that's on the National Priorities List of the Environmental Protection Agency. At the Tuesday night meeting approximately a week ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission passed the resolution as before you tonight, which authorized the public hearing to proceed and the discussion of the topic to take place. It is also important to note at that same meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation to proceed forward with the moratorium, and provided a list of rationales for such. The Planning and Zoning Commission is anticipating taking final action on that particular matter at its September 16 meeting, and that will be forwarded to City Council on September 23rd.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe, or any comments on the receipt and file? Councilmember Dodwell?
Do you have any sense of Mr. Burns' position on this?
I would defer to City Attorney Young on that particular question.
City Attorney Young?
I know of none.
Okay, I didn't know whether you'd had any conversations with him.
We have not, and none of his attorney or any representative from his development company have participated at this stage. They have submitted a revised plan, which has been discussed by City Council. That plan reduces the number of lots from 23 to 18, and that was one of the prompters for a reintroduction, so to speak, of the moratorium under a little more formal and thought-through basis. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, so, that takes us to adjournment, unless, Councilmember Remy?
Can I just make a quick announcement, just for folks that may not be on social media? So, on Friday, we have a nice deal for tickets for the Cardinals game, at $10.25. It's a nice community event where we all can be here, there, together. I did receive word just before coming in, and I'll find officially tomorrow, but there's a high likelihood that a Wildwood person or persons will be thrown out the first pitch, which I'm hoping will be one or two of our 100-year-old residents, which I think is going to be fantastic for the city. So, pick up your tickets at City Hall, hope to see everybody there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah, I don't know, Rick, Joe, whoever, I just wanted to be sure with barbecue bash coming up, that we have strengthened our security, so that we don't have any other incidents on what's been put in place.
With the mayor's permission.
Sure, Joe.
Councilmember McCutcheon, last year, we did deploy the barrier system that had been reviewed and selected by the Police Department. We didn't have enough barriers to cover all of the major points where vehicular or pedestrian could have a conflict. With the support of the Board of Public Safety and City Council, we purchased additional barriers, so we think we've covered that problem area that kind of was identified last year, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Bros?
Yeah, I'd just like to, there's been a lot of discussion on the flooding, and I certainly agree with everything on Woods Avenue. What I would like to mention is that there was also a significant amount of flooding on Wild Horse Creek, and if it's okay, can I show two pictures?
Sure.[1671.46]